Good morning. The Commissioners Meeting for March 16th. I'll have you go around the room and introduce yourselves, starting with Rock.
My name is Rock Wonkel. I live here in Shoto and happy to be up for appointment for the Tax Appeal Board. I previously served in Miles City on the Miles City Board of Appeals and Adjustments as their Chairman for about seven years. We dealt a lot with floodplain and building code, pretty much telling people no that they cannot build in the floodplain.
You can build in the floodplain, but you can't get insurance.
Well, there was, we were, we were not allowed to build a lot in the floodplain.
So we'll go around with the rest of them, introduce and appreciate it.
Yep.
Austin Meyer, Teton County Saniterian.
I'm Eva Anseth and I just here for a public comment on the District Hospital Funds that are left.
I'm Sam Correlson, Commissioner.
Dick Snellman, Commissioner.
Meln Pace with the Teton County Fire Service Fee Board.
Alan Gonya, Teton County Road Superintendent.
Steve Rose, Teton County Road Fire Chief.
Paula Jackanetti, Clerk and Recorder.
Melanie Martinson, Shoto, Kansas.
Welcome. We have minutes from the previous two meetings.
What's the dates?
February 16th and March 2nd.
I would move to approve those.
And I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Road encroachments, we have one from Three Rivers on First Lane Southeast. It's cable, plowing a cable in and the road supervisor signed it.
Okay, I would move to approve that.
I'd second that. All in favor?
Aye.
The Cemetery Board gave me a list of the businesses that are going to take care of the cemeteries. And there's, I'll just go through them, Mel, as far as for Shoto. The Ross Deppner. Dutton Cemetery is Kyle Brewster. Farmington Cemetery is Eminell Farms. Sunset Hills. HL Ventures. St. Paul Cemetery. Front Range Custom Mowing. Bynum Cemetery. Humble Ventures LLC.
Like H-U-M-B-L-E, like humble?
And we've rebid the Emanuel and Power Cemeteries. The gentleman that had been taking care of it just decided because of age and health that he didn't want to bid on it again. So that one will be filled as soon as we get a candidate.
Dick, do you have the announce that each one of those will charge?
Yes. And virtually most of them are the same as last year, but Shoto's $4,000 a month. It is for a five-month.
Seven. Shoto's seven months.
You are correct. It's April 1st through October 31st. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
The rest of them are May 1st through September 30th. The Dutton or Kyle Brewster's $2,600 a month. Eminell Farms is $1,200 a month. Sunset Hills is $2,600 a month.
Now who has that one?
HL Ventures, Sunny.
Sunny and Murray.
Oh, Sunny and Murray, okay.
They have to have their independent contractor's license. Front Range or St. Paul is $2,000 a month. And the Bynum Cemetery is $500 a month.
Do we know who Front Range and Humble Ventures are?
Justin Wilson.
He is Front Range?
Yes.
Okay.
Same, yeah, it's the same as last year.
And who's Humble Ventures?
Ben Rhodes.
Okay, gotcha.
And Eminell Farms is Lida Armstrong.
Mark and Lida Armstrong.
Yep. So what's your pleasure?
I would move that we approve this.
I'd second that.
Sextons, changes.
And we'll fill in the Emanuel and Power as soon as we get a candidate. Any other comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dick, I'm sorry, these are all one-year contracts?
No, they're three.
Three-year contracts?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
We have the resolution for Kosky Tax Embatement. And we actually approved that last meeting, but we didn't have the.
We just had to wait for the resolution to be written, so.
Right.
I don't think we need a.
No, we should have.
A motion at this time, we just need to sign this.
You're correct.
I would, I would appreciate a motion because you're adopting a resolution.
Okay. Okay, I would move that we adopt this resolution.
I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
And we advertised, we needed one more individual on our Tax Appeal Board. And I'd like to introduce Rock, if you want to give us a.
Sure.
Synopsis of.
I've, a permanent residence of Shoto this year, but I've been, pretty much been here for five or six years. I work for Scotty Embodied and we also have a construction company together that we're 50/50 on. I've been involved with different facts, you know, facets of government through my adult life. Went to school at Montana State University and was on a number of boards there. I was a student body vice president. I have some political aspirations in the future and want to learn more about how counties work.
Okay.
So, looking forward to serving the Tax Appeal Board and possibly some other boards if there's any vacancies. I don't have much experience in the tax appeal process, but I'm looking forward to learning about it. Is there any questions about me or who I am?
Any comments or?
Welcome aboard.
There's three, there's two, there's three that will be on this board and the other two, which is Ron.
Osberg.
Osberg. And Dick Van Aken. And they've, they're experienced in that, so they'll be a good training.
Yeah.
Facility for you.
And the Department of Revenue has set up May 10 in Great Falls to train the three Tax Appeal Boards and their clerk, which is me.
So do you have a motion?
Yeah, I would move that we appoint Rock to that Tax Appeal Board.
I would second that. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, congratulations, Rock.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Rock, what board did you say you started on?
I was the Miles City Board of Appeals and Adjustments Chairman.
Thanks. Wonkel, W-A-N-K-E, huh?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
We have a resolution to lift a covenant and I'll turn that over to Austin.
Yeah, so we talked about that last time. We just didn't have a resolution ready, I think, but this is Doug Ferris's property, just on your way up to Dutton by the Teton River. This is, this isn't down in the floodplain or anything like that. This is for a house site way up on the hill. It's been a little bit since I did the approval, but I believe he was exempt from like the non-degradiation analysis, which estimates impact to groundwater and surface water just due to his distance from, from everything.
So that resolution is 2023-14.
Okay, I would move that we adopt that, that resolution.
And I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this was another resolution that was voted for on the March 2nd meeting, but the resolution was not prepared.
Right.
We have a resolution on a budget hearing and these are amounts of money that we've already received. We just need to have them added to the budget. LATCF, which is Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. All these acronyms.
Yeah.
And that amount is $457,214.83. And on the same resolution, Alcohol Rehabilitation Fund, that amount is $15,514. The resolution number is 2023-16. Do you hear a?
Yeah, I would move to adopt this resolution.
Okay, I would second that. Any comments?
I would like to comment on the, the LATCF was funding that we did not know that we were going to receive at the beginning of the fiscal year, and we did receive these funds and they may start to be used, so we needed to get that approved as soon as possible. And the alcohol, we usually are paid $1 per person and it's usually about $60, $100. But because there was extra funding left over from the ARPA fundings, the state gave us an additional $15,514. So we need to have that because it was already paid out, backed out to the mental health facilities that share that funding.
Thanks, Paula.
You bet.
All in favor?
Uh, let's see.
You already made the motion. We just asked for.
Oh, yeah, all right. Aye.
Aye. Resolution passed. We had a meeting a few weeks ago with Mako Health Insurance. As you can all guess, it went up. It's actually went up $66 a month. And figuring that out, that'd be approximately 38 cents an hour that individuals or employees would get to the county. And we decided to pay all of that for our employees. And that's more for just comment, so everybody knows we're not, shouldn't have to pass anything for that. Any questions?
What's the net impact to your budget? How much does that increase based on the number of?
I don't have that right here on my notes, but I can get it.
Just less than $40,000.
Yeah.
I, because we just don't look and solve and sign up for it, but I can get you.
And approximate.
And approximate, sure. Yep, I can do that to you now.
So Paula, we don't need to have a motion or anything to?
You can if you want to because you did sign a document. Well, you.
We will sign a document.
We will sign a document.
Maybe we should do a motion there.
You can do a motion, absolutely, because you are going to sign the document that states the county's.
Right. Well, I move that we sign this document and proceed from there.
Yes, I was reading, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's been a long wait.
Paula thought you were having a stroke.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And again, guys, this is the, you pay 100% of the premium for the county employee.
Right.
On the, is there a basic? Basic, right, gotcha. And I can give you a copy back if you want. This is good, okay?
The next item on our agenda is the Fire Fee Board. I will turn it over to Steve and.
At the last Fee Board meeting, which was Monday, the Board voted to request a $50 a year increase on the fee. It would raise the fee from $55 to $105 per inhabited structure in the county. Reason for the increase is we're got our backs against the wall on SEBAs or air packs. Bottles must be replaced every 15 years. We're pumping up against that on some. We do have about 30 air packs in the county that are obsolete. Nobody makes them anymore. There's no replacement parts. When they go down, we're done. And we have five of them that have gone down in the county. One of them was on a structure fire and that's, it's a safety issue for that. Also, our turnout year has a 10-year shelf life. So every 10 years, we're supposed to replace that for each farm. We have 105 volunteers in the county. The SEBAs, they cost between $9,000 and $10,000 each. We're looking to replace between 30 and 35.
Steve, how much was one about?
$9,000 to $10,000.
Okay, thank you.
Turnout years will run between $3,000 and $3,500 each. With a $50 increase, we figure we could replace the air packs in six years. Then with the increase keep coming in, we would like to put a line item in just for air packs and turnout gear, so we're not behind the eight ball anymore. We can keep building it up to where, when we need to replace things again, we probably, hopefully will have enough money to do that.
Well, and if I remember, this was previous years to me being a Commissioner, but there was funding when 9/11 was?
Yes, this, this, Dick Van Aken was at our last meeting and I think he said, what was it, 98, 99 or something like that, right around in there. The grants were easy for fire departments to get. And at that time, they replaced our, excuse me, yeah, they did replace the air, um, air packs we had at that time. Problem was we did it all at one time and so we're, they're all up at the same time.
Trying to get into a rotation.
Yeah. If we can get into the six-year rotation, like I say, we can maybe put this all out. I do have some other information here. I kind of wrote this out. I'll just hand these out to anybody.
So when was the last time that you had a increase?
Increase was in 2007. It went from $35 to $55.
Approximately how many inhabited households do you levy on then?
Right around 1,590. And since 2016, that's when I started keeping track of everything, we have had 41 structure fires in the county.
41?
Yes. And since 2016, there has been 880 total fire calls.
16.
16. I'll give this out to you if you look at them and ask if there's any questions or anything.
I got some more here.
Steve, I'll probably just attach these to the end of the list if you please.
As you can see, the fire calls, they're erratic, they go up, they go down year by year. As far as trucks or anything like that, the structure trucks, we run from 1975 to 2003. Water fingers from 87 to 97 in Arizona. This isn't a request we take lightly. This is something that we, that is needed. This is for the safety and protection of firefighters in the county.
Are there any comments or? Well, we'd gladly open a hearing for two weeks for comments and go from there.
And Steve, this would be for the '23, '24 fiscal year?
Yes.
You want to move to open the hearing?
Yeah, I would move that we open that hearing and let it run for two weeks. Didn't sort of comment.
Joe, seconded. No other comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, Joe. At 10:20? Thank you. I'm writing.
Commissioner report?
I don't have anything new. Got some interest in the hospital or in the new building, I believe, that we're talking about. We're going to have another meeting this afternoon at 2 o'clock on that. And I don't have anything beyond that.
Joe? It's the, Dana said the things all in my head.
Yeah.
Well, I've got a few and our younger citizens should be pretty proud of themselves. The Shoto High School up here, their science Olympiad, they had, on the high school end, they had four seniors and a freshman and they repeated as the smaller school winners. And that was in, at Bozeman, MSU. And then the junior high, they won their class too for the first year.
Second.
For the seniors.
Second year?
Second year for the seniors, the junior high teams got second.
Right.
Oh, okay.
In their small school.
Okay. All right. Well, I was scribbling and writing down, so I didn't read it quite right there.
Still agree accomplishing.
Yeah.
And then we had Robert Preston in the Spelling Bee at Greenfield, won first place for the second year in a row. And Vida Little from Shoto placed second. And, I mean, these are great things for young citizens coming up. DAR had a citizenship essay contest and there was several kids, and I apologize for not having all their names here, but from Teton County that won certificates. Charlie Russell Art Week is on in Great Falls and there's several from the power schools that are displaying art down there this week. And in Shoto, we have a new Eagle Scout, which I didn't get what their program was, but it's quite an accomplishment on anybody to make Eagle Scout. And his name was Matthew Haas. So I think it's pretty good accomplishments for all those kids.
Yeah, thanks for recognizing that.
Public comment?
I just had a comment on the use of the hospital district funds that are left. I saw on the account that that was very smart to go all toward the building here in Shoto. And I think part of it is, part of it definitely should do that. We, we wanted that to go for health-related purposes, but since the whole county or the whole district paid in since 1970 until 2015 for the mill revenue, I would like to just suggest that, that some of that money be transferred to the ambulance fund to be used in Fairfield and Pendleton and Bynum at a later date. They're going to, there, there is no health need right there, right now, but eventually things will have to be replaced or new equipment come along that could be useful. And I would like to see it go directly to the communities. In the figures I brought in for you, for the three Commissioners earlier, it doesn't look like that whole $510,000 would have to go toward the building. And so I propose that maybe $100,000 go to Fairfield and $25,000 go to Pendleton, Bynum for future use of ambulance or ambulance products that can help save lives and be beneficial that way. And I know you want to close that fund, so I thought maybe that could be transferred into the ambulance fund and so that would still get rid of the hospital district fund, but reserve those monies for those areas.
And we certainly appreciate your comments and we'll take all of it under advisement, but we also have Deb Coverdale putting together a list of things that need to be done at the different ambulance barns.
Barns.
And what we've, and yes, at the different locations.
Right.
And we've already made some of those improvements that they needed already.
Right.
So we'll have those numbers probably by the end of the week.
Have you found out what that was yet, what was spent there?
No, but it'll probably be the end of the week or end of next week. Because Deb was compiling that information.
For that, okay, thank you.
Yep, you betcha.
Yeah, thank you for your time and efforts with that.
Any other public notices or comments? Any other, um, public notices or comments? If not, our next meeting will be April sixth. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting at thirty.
Thanks, everyone, for coming out. That's where your interest in the, in the boards.
Yep.
Appreciate that.
You're going to second guess when you said any other board.